granata hills is celebrating its 100th anniversary this year with a series of events. On Saturday, August 9th, join the Los Angeles Public Library at the Granada Hills Branch to learn all about the LA Aqueduct and how water has shaped the growth of LA. Guest speaker Jack Feldman will tell the story of the Aqueduct and the challenges to bringing water to the city. Feldman retired after 36 years with the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power and is an avid local historian. Join LA Public Library at the Granada Hills Branch to learn about the Aqueduct on Saturday, August 9th at 10:00 AM. For more, visit lapl.org/events. Join Councilmember Adrien Nazarian for a free community movie screening at Tiara Street Park. On Sunday, August 10th, the free movie is Sonic 3. This 2024 action-adventure comedy film is based on the Sonic video game series. Head to Tiara Street Park for free screening of Sonic 3 on Sunday, August 10th at 7:30. For more information, visit the Instagram of Councilmember Nazarian at CD2LosAngeles. And that's a look at some things to do. And that's all for this week. I'm Susan Huckle, and from all of us here at LA This Week, thank you so much for joining us. Remember that you can watch us online anytime at lacityview.org. We're also on Instagram, Facebook, X, and YouTube. See you next time for more LA This Week.
Did you know the average LA resident uses about 89 gallons of water each day? Challenge yourself to conserve. Turning off the faucet when you brush saves up to 10 gallons of water. Taking a five-minute or less shower saves up to 15 gallons of water. Washing only full loads of laundry saves up to 30 gallons of water. And fixing a running toilet can save up to 50 gallons of water. Keep it in mind all day, every day. It's water conservation the LA way.[157.26]
There is going to be changes to the building, if you will. And so LA 28 need and us need to work together to so that they understand what those changes will be. Some of the areas that are available today may not be available because we will be mid-construction when the games come. The hope is that we get it to a point, the construction is what we refer to as Olympics-ready, so that we can then transition from the construction period, pause the construction, and hand it over to LA 28 for the games. And then post-games, they would hand it back to us to finalize construction.
Okay, so then some of the proposed construction would in fact potentially shift what is currently planned by LA 28 for use, because we already know what LA 28 basically needs or what they were planning on using for the purposes of hosting the games at that venue. So this new, so these changes could potentially thwart what they're already designated, because they've already told us what they're going to use it for. That's not new. So now potentially, we could be obstructing that, given the changes in the timeline. So my understanding is that the Gil Lindsay Plaza, and the amendments to Gil Lindsay Plaza, was among those that were proposed for the value engineering, meaning that's what was deducted from the project to kind of bring the cost down. From the estimated $1 billion, what is the savings on that? Hi, good morning.
Gary Lee Moore, consultant to the CAO's office, project executive. The value engineering that was identified was about $124 million.
Of the one, so it shaved off?
The estimate that was provided in February was approximately $1.7 billion.
Oh, excuse me, $1.7 billion, okay. And you shaved off 124 million, okay. So DWP has flagged some concerns about the power installation. And what happens if the facility isn't fully operational by '28?
So as part of the reconstruction, you're right, council member, there's a number of electrical services that need to be modified or upgraded. Actually, this Thursday, we're having a three-hour workshop with the developer, the Bureau of Engineering, and the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power to go over all those requirements. There has been ongoing meetings with all of those parties that take place on a weekly basis, so, but this is now with the senior leadership of LA DWP in this detailed workshop. So we're planning of how the needs and then looking at contingency plans if some of those relocations cannot be done. So that's currently ongoing.
Okay, and so, you know, we're already in the basically first-ish week of August. Should, what does this look like in terms of timing for construction and meeting the timeline, given DWP, given LA 28?
Sure, it's a very truncated time period to get to what we're saying is commercial close. Commercial close would be when we sign off on the project agreement, and then construction would in essence start the next day, or if not, you know, within that first week after commercial close. Originally, we were looking at mid-September for that, but that's when we were expecting the proposal from, the committed proposal to come in from APCLA in mid-July. We actually just received it last Friday. So the city is now in the process of reviewing their proposal, comparing it to the numbers that we saw earlier, comparing it to the numbers we presented earlier to the council to see what has changed. We will then, the CAO will then be putting together our analysis in consultation with our consultants and submitting a final report on the project with our final recommendations at the end of this month. And then it will go through the committee process, council approval process, with the hope of getting direction sometime next month.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Any more questions for our team here? Good morning, Gary, it's good to see you. All right, thank you all so much. All right, so with that, we'll open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
All right, thank you all. All right, what's next, Mr. Clark?
Mr. President, the council may now move on to closed session items 30 through 39 considered by the Budget and Finance Committee.
All right, items 13 through 39 considered by the Budget Committee. Our chairwoman, Councilmember Yaroslavski.
Thank you, Council President. We considered these items 30 through 39 in closed session at Budget and Finance, and I recommend approval.
All right, Mr. Clark, if you can read the details into the record, we'll call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. For item 30, in the case entitled Suzanne Green versus City of Los Angeles et al., there's a recommendation to expend up to $200,000 in settlement. For item 31, in the case entitled Cynthia Carina Alvarez versus City of Los Angeles et al., there's a recommendation to expend up to $2 million in settlement. For item 32, in the case entitled Carl Augustus versus City of Los Angeles et al., there's a recommendation to expend up to $1,100,000 in settlement. For item 33, in the case entitled Leslie Garcia et al. versus Fernando Ayala Muñoz et al., there's a recommendation to expend up to $850,000 in settlement. For item 34, in the case entitled Mark Allen Clark versus City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to reject the proposed settlement. For item 35, in the case entitled Susie Momzie et al. versus City of Los Angeles et al., there's a recommendation to expend up to $400,000 in settlement. For item 36, in the case entitled Roberto Vargas versus City of Los Angeles et al., there's a recommendation to expend up to $300,000 in settlement. For item 37, in the case entitled Bernardino López Escobar versus City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to expend up to $200,000 in settlement. For item 38, in the case entitled Victor Breguet versus City of Los Angeles et al., there's a recommendation to expend up to $150,000 in settlement. And for item 39, in the case entitled Herc Rentals Incorporated versus City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to expend up to $86,824.74 in settlement.
All right, those items are now before us, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
All right, what's next, Mr. Clark?
Mr. President, for the record, the Government Operations Committee report for item 13 has been submitted and is available online in the respective council file. The council may now move on to public comment.
All right, if you could read the instructions for public comment into the record, City Attorney and Mr. Clark.
Yes, Mr. President. To people providing public comment, when it's your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak to. You will have one minute per item, up to three minutes total for the items open for public comment. We will tell you when your time is up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you are not on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you are on topic, you will get one brief warning from me or the council president. At that point, you need to get immediately and clearly on topic. If you do not do so, or if you again stray off-topic, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we will move on to the next speaker. The items open for public comment on the agenda today are items 1 through 13 and items 19 through 29. So again, the items open for public comment on the agenda are items 1 through 13 and 19 through 29. Members of the public may also speak for up to one minute for general public comment. During general public comment, members of the public may speak to any of the items or anything else in a city's subject matter jurisdiction. A couple more announcements, if I can have the interpreters make this first one aloud to the room, please. If you require a Spanish-language interpreter, please make sure to pause every few sentences so the interpreters can interpret.
Si se requiere interpretación de español e inglés de su comentario, no se olviden de dar una pausa después de cada frase para permitir la interpretación.
Don't worry, we will pause your time while the interpreters are interpreting, so you will get the same amount of time as everyone else. Thank you.
Y no se preocupen, vamos a dar una pausa al tiempo que tiene para su comentario para que tenga la misma cantidad de tiempo que los demás. Gracias.
One final announcement, the order in which we take the public speakers who have signed up is generated at random, so it is randomly generated. So in order to help us run an efficient public comment, we would ask that you please wait until you hear the name you signed up under read aloud before lining up. After you hear the name that you signed up under read aloud, you can line up in any order on your left-hand side of the council chambers. Thank you.
I'll begin calling names. Rodney, Tiffany Wright, and Audit LA.
All right, and those, we'll ask those folks to line up to speak on my right, your left, and we'll begin with Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Harris-Dawson. Colleagues, I am delighted to be joined this morning by our new Los Angeles Community College Chancellor, Dr. Alberto Roman, and of course, also by Jocelyn Duarte. Many of you know Jocelyn, the Executive Director of SOLF. But colleagues, I wanted to let you all know, we're celebrating a very special moment this morning. Collaborating with the Youth Development Department this morning, we've launched the Suma Wealth App for young people in the City of Los Angeles. We know that financial literacy is something that young people are struggling, they don't have access to the same basic level of understanding that so many of us perhaps back in the day had access to when we were in high school. Those lessons are no longer provided. Well, Suma Wealth, in our collaboration with the City of Los Angeles and Suma Wealth, working with the Youth Development Department, we've made it free and accessible for young people in the City of Los Angeles to have it at their fingertips. And why is that important? Because right now, young people are overnight becoming the head of household because of a man-made disaster. And families being stripped away, and the head of household no longer being that adult family member that is no longer in the picture. And that can change overnight. We wanted to provide the tools and the resources for families to be prepared. So working with SOLF, we have a checklist of that emergency checklist that families need in order to prepare. You know, Mr. Lee, we're normally preparing for natural disasters and emergencies with emergency preparedness kits. Well sadly, we have to now prepare our families in the same manner, making sure that families are aware and familiar, who's going to, who's got access to the accounts, who's going to help pay the bills if something should happen and the status changes overnight for the head of household. So the Suma Wealth App is now accessible for young people, giving them modules for free for them and their families to help be financially prepared and provide that education to the greatest extent possible that they work on their own timeline. And that's what this is all about. So I want to thank Jocelyn for her partnership, I want to thank the Chancellor for his collaboration and being here this morning. The Invest in Youth Coalition, we know that these are circumstances that are, you know, families are, happening to families overnight. We are a $14 billion institution here in the City of Los Angeles. It makes absolutely no sense that we strip away some of the fundamental resources that young people and families depend on, particularly in this moment. And that's what this app and this progress represents, is a collaboration to empower young people and their families to be prepared. And yes, we're going to continue to augment our support to help those families to the greatest extent possible, but we need to make sure that they also have the tools to help themselves to be financially prepared and aware of the decisions that they make that could help aid them to helping to stabilize their family should a family member be impacted by this man-made disaster. So colleagues, I encourage you to please share the information on the Suma Wealth App. Go to the Youth Development Department's website for additional information and share it out. But this is a really timely and unique partnership that we've been working on, and I want to thank Beatriz Acevedo for her collaboration and partnership for us to make this accessible to the 800,000 young people here in the City of Los Angeles. Thank you.
And just actually, before you begin, can we read out the names one more time? We'll do it after the first speaker. Go ahead, since you're already up there. Which items would you like to speak to?
Thank you, good morning. My name is Tiffany Wright. I would like to speak on agenda items 1 through 13 and general public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items, you'll see three minutes for the items, and then we'll add an additional minute for general. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Good morning, council members, staff, and meeting attendees. Thank you for paying attention, Councilwoman Roman and Hernandez, and those of you who are actually looking and listening as you are paid to do, we are paying attention and we appreciate you paying attention. My time is valuable and so is yours, so I'll try to be brief. I would like to speak to you today about the distress that our city is in, the distress that your constituents are in. LAPD is brutalizing voters that will unseat you if you do not take action. There have been 24-hour protests outside of the Metropolitan Detention Center where firsthand, we are seeing LAPD brutalize voters, your stakeholders and your constituents that you are here to protect. We must take action and have LAPD stop.
Speaker, this is not on the agenda, you're welcome to speak to it during general, but I'm going to ask that you-
Okay, great, thank you so much for the reminder. I'll move on, let's talk about agenda item number 13. So I am a 17-year veteran of the cannabis industry, and let me tell you, it has been a long and hard road. Today, you are going to be considering an increase for the Department of Cannabis Regulation fees. It is imperative that you reject this increase, and furthermore, that you take additional action to provide relief. The social equity program was designed to benefit those who have been marginalized by a society that disproportionately polices black and brown Angelinos and to provide them with economic opportunities. Instead, they have been indebted and vaporized by a DCR that does the exact same job that the State Department of Cannabis Control does and then charges us exponentially more than the DCC charges. Increasing the fees would only serve to provide a salary increase for the employees of DCR who actually do the exact same work that the state does for us for free. We must disband DCR, we must sunset DCR immediately. We can instead attempt to turn them into the Department of Cannabis-
Speaker, you've exhausted your one minute on item 13, are there any other items you'd like to speak to?
Oh, thank you so very much, I really appreciate you watchdogging me, just like we will be watchdogging all of you.
So your general public comment, you have one minute, go ahead.
Yes, I would like to speak in general about the economic distress and that the distress that this entire city is in as a direct result of the decisions made by this council. This council and its predecessors are capable of so much more. You are capable of so much better, and I can tell by the way that some of you are looking at me that you agree. One of my personal tenants that I follow and that I uphold as a woman is that when I look in the mirror, I need to be able to respect the person looking back at me. I do not do anything that would compromise my personal integrity or my respect. I beg you to ask yourselves, do you do the same? Do you hold yourselves to the same standards of accountability as you would expect any decent human being to uphold? If so, you must vote in favor of things that protect basic humanity, such as public safety, such as the right.
As we wait for the next speaker, and I, yes, I see you, so I know that you're up next. So before the next speaker begins, your time has not started. Just as an FYI for everyone, I see some new faces here. So the reason why we have to monitor the time is that we need to treat everybody equally. So if something is not on the agenda, you're more than welcome to speak to it during general public comment. But if you have been to these meetings before, you may have seen some of the heat-filled vitriolic comments. If we were to not monitor public comment, then we would have to allow everybody three minutes to do that thing as well. So again, we appreciate your patience. If there's not enough time for you to provide the comments that you would like to, or if we run out of time and you are not called via the random generator, you are more than welcome to provide written public comment at lacouncil.com. Again, that's LA council, wait, sorry, lacouncil.com. And that URL can be found at the top of every council agenda. Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Hello, can you hear me? I would like to speak-
Yep, we can hear you.
To all items and public, and non-agenda, I mean, public comment.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, first, I want to talk about the first two with the street vacations or the area vacations. I don't like the idea of vacations. I mean, no, I love the idea of vacations, I mean, thank you for the three-week vacation you gave us, hope you're back working hard. But the thing is, is that you're selling city property to entities that you don't know how they're going to really take care of it. Like, I know Scientology wants a street vacation, they would love one, but they want it to be able to keep the public out and to keep their people in without anybody being able to see or have eyes on them to see if they need help or to help limit any escapes. Because I don't know if you're aware of this, a lot of people have to actually escape Scientology. Look up Valerie Haney, who had to get in the back of a trunk of a car and get out. So I'm, no to street vacations. The next one is the, let's talk about the cannabis one, okay? Like, you want to just put all the pressure on businesses, small businesses, as they're trying to actually provide, you know, help or maybe relief or whatever, medication for dealing with, life right now can be difficult, the city is difficult, there's so much that's difficult. So I have a suggestion, instead of going after small businesses that are trying to make it, why don't you go after these, like, I'll give you an example. Scientology that has probably a billion buildings, it's a slight exaggeration, and they're tax-exempt, you're not getting any tax base from all their buildings, and I'm sure there's plenty, so why not just, you know, get them to be not tax-exempt and get that money in? As far as the lighting, okay, I, the entire agenda is so thick and it's all about lighting, it just shows you how dark this city is. And it's ridiculous how dark it is. When are you guys going to deal with the, is it the copper theft or whatever it is, it is very hard, especially, I mean, I'm glad my new chair has headlights, but even that doesn't help me try to navigate these horrible streets that you guys don't fix. You don't fix the sidewalks, you put very little, you put all this money for, you know, probably stuff that's not needed, but the sidewalks that are actually needed, that get you sued endlessly, you don't fix. And I don't get it, but, you know, whatever, but the least you could do is give us lights, right, Mr. McCosker, to try to figure out where not to, like, you know, where not to fall in or where not to trip, because if we can at least see the obstacle, maybe we can avoid it. I know you're trying to do it over in your, you know, but, and I'm glad you're addressing it, but come on, it shouldn't be an entire agenda. And I bet Smoking Scan agrees with me on that, that, right, just light up the friggin' city, it's not that hard. And, you know, and that'd be less lawsuits for you guys, which is nice. Okay, public comment.
General public comment.
Okay, I'm here because tonight is National Night Out. And for the most part, I fully support every single venue that's going to have it, except for the Church of Scientology at the Big Blue Building, because they will not allow anyone who's a former member, anyone who's ever criticized them, or any neighbor that's ever complained about their abuses or anything, we're not allowed in. So if you guys show up, Hugo, you have my email, I hope you read it, if you show up, okay, then you're siding with them. So that means the victims of Scientology, the protesters, or anyone, the community at large, will see that you side for them. And there's victims who are coming forward, I have one, you know, there's people going to the police, they're going, they're starting to get lawyers, they're starting to fight back about their victimization. And to see anyone from the city standing with them until everything's been adjudicated and the slave labor of dealing on public streets with slave labors dealt with, there's no reason for you guys to be there.
Next speaker, but I believe we're going to need to read more names.
Yeah, I'd like to call a few more names. Brandon Atalano, Amy, Jessica, and Carrie.
Good morning, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, City Attorney Smoking Scan, start with item number one.
And Speaker, before you move on to general public comment, I just, again, there's a lot of new people here, and I'm sure they have some questions. I just want to make the same offer that we've made to you before. If you would like a foreign language interpreter, I believe Mandarin or Cantonese, because I know sometimes you switch, then you're more than welcome to request one if you let us know 48 hours in advance, we will do our best to arrange for that. Go ahead, you have one minute for general public comment.
Thank you very much, City Attorney, very much. First of all, I would like to inform our friend Dana from Smoking Scan, because Dana told me that I'm no longer allowed to sing a song anymore, so today I tried an opera, I did not sing a song, because Dana from Smoking Scan told me that if I continue to sing a song, she will ask Smoking Scan and our City Attorney to deport me back to Asia and to deport me back to North Korea, I don't want that. I wish that our City Attorney, our Dana, and our Smoking Scan can continue to allow me a chance to live, to work, to study in the United States of America under Scientology, of course, but, and I would just want to make sure, Dana, that I kept my promise to you, I did not sing a song, there's no music, there's only opera today, and hopefully, my friend Dana will not get mad to me tonight. Thank you very much, Smoking Scan, you like Spiller 2026!
Next speaker.
The next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Julian Alexander, Kirsten Peterson, and Katie Lefoun.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning, my name is Carrie Rudolph, and I'd like to speak on item number two and provide a general comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general, and this goes for everyone, the mic is adjustable, so feel free to adjust the microphone as you see fit. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to all the city workers, thank you very much for your service. Once again, my name is Carrie Rudolph, and I live on Pacific View Drive, and I'm speaking on item number two, which is the vacation of the Eastman on Pacific View Drive. I'm strongly opposed to the vacation of the Eastman. The Eastman supports the many public utilities in our very narrow and winding streets. The applicant, the applicant for the Eastman vacation is a professional developer and builder- for the easement vacation is a professional developer and builder, and he bought the land knowing that the easement exists and that it supports the public utilities for our neighborhood on this hillside. So buyer beware. The application is replete with inaccuracies and misrepresentations. In section two of the environmental assessment form, Mandy Rafferty, the professional developer and builder, marked no to 30 questions, and at least 14 should have been answered yes. Here's a few examples. Number, number 26, could the project generate a controversy or result in a public opposition? The answer is yes.
General public comment.
Number 20, does the project involve construction in hilly or mountainous terrain? The answer is yes. Could grading, blasting, excavating, or drilling be required? The answer is yes, and he answered no, and marked no to all of these questions and others. We have, we would have raised these questions and others at the June 11 hearing. However, we were not, we did not receive notification of that hearing, and we would have addressed all of those then. The applicant also is asking for relief from the hillside ordinance. The ordinance exists, and every single homeowner is required to comply with the hillside ordinance. We ask that the application be sent back to the subcommittee for further review and its impact on our small, narrow, and winding street. The city is being asked to give up an easement that has maintained for a century, which supports our neighborhood solely so that the owner can raise the value of his property and enrich himself. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning. My name is Carrie Palmer, and I'm speaking for Council District Eight and making a general comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment.
Okay. So I wanted to speak to the council, specifically Council President Harris Dawson, and asking for your help. There has been an increased criminal activity in District Eight in between the 96th and 98th block of Hobart Boulevard in Los Angeles, coming from the alley. There is, we're, we're trying to reduce the crime in the area, and we'd like to request a motion to reduce the crime rate and install metal gates to support safety in the area of 96th and 98th Street. There have been multiple fires. People's garages have been burned down. The homeless is cooking in the alley and burning down. The preschool next door, there have been shootings, prostitution, drug use, drug sales, break-ins causing constituents to have to fight for their lives in their own homes. Torched cars, stripped cars, weekly trash dumpings, loud noises and fights, and music played late at night in the alley. So we're asking just for your help and your support, and we would love to meet with you to discuss a motion.
Speaker, you're, yep.
Thank you so much, Maurice. And the Patan suit will follow up with you, and we'll get behind it. Thank you so much.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning. My name's Katie Lefoun, and I have a general public comment, since none of the agenda items have anything to do with what's going on in the city right now.
Okay. So, I mean, you can check the agendas. Obviously, they, they change every day.
Yep.
If you would like, or, well, they change for every meeting. You have one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Okay. I believe we have some of your attention now. Thank you very much for that. What we would like is for each and every one of you to please have a town hall in the next two weeks, immediately. A week on the ground is like a month out there. And I believe that there's things happening in the city, in this district, that you guys do not know about, that you absolutely need to know about. What we want is for LAPD to protect the citizens of LA, not to enforce ICE and DHS rules. Mayor Bass gets on the, gets on the TV and says that LAPD is not working for ICE, that it stands against the Trump administration. They won't allow it in our city. But on the ground, they very clearly have a much different directive. They are watching our rights be violated. They are, they are squashing our First Amendment rights, and they are enforcing the federal government. They are not protecting LA, and we want them to protect us. Please help. Please help. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Eddie Alvarez, Luis Rivera, and Mandy Rafferty.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning. My name is Julian Alexander-McCarra. General comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, Honorary, Honorary Council. Community organizations have been at the forefront, providing community emergency resources and aid within the city and the extended county. I'm looking at eye contact, community resources, and the security of our constituencies. The challenges that we're currently facing trump any stripes held in the past. Our constitution is at stake, and we're all realizing this. Our people are living in fear. We need each other's confidence in order to overcome these challenges. We need revisions to LA ordinances 5507-4118, as they contradict each other. We need storage space, collaborative references for resources to maintain emergency support and inventory. We need to be able to hold an effective conversation. Organizations, plural, will be sending out emails to your offices. We truly hope that we can supply them with storage, emergency resources, so we can consolidate mutual aid efforts.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. My name is Brandon Atalano Torres. I'm not related to the Torres family that I know of. But, yes, just general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for general. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to start with key words. I'm not a politician, but I will be a politician one day. I'm from Orange County. I have great friends. We went to Angel Stadium for the football championship game my senior year, played against the 49ers center for the five-year championship reign that he had. That was him. But yes, I have 40 seconds. I want to just spit it out. These people come to you guys every week. We're grateful for you guys for reading these long, boring agendas every day that need to be revised for the smaller class, that don't have the brain capacity to read through these agendas. And that's where you guys come in. We need you guys really to just to put the vote to the reason why you're in office. So people put you in office for a reason. Maybe it was just for fun. Maybe you got lucky. A lot of you guys get lucky. A lot of you guys are meant to be here by the grace of the gods. But, yeah, let's get her done. Let's make these streets clean, 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 clean.
Next speaker.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to? One through 13, public comment.
I'm sorry, you said which item in public comment?
I guess one through 13 in public comment.
So you have three minutes for the items. It's one through 13, and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items. Go ahead.
Hello, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your time and leadership, city council members. We're here today, well, actually, I want to also thank a few council members, Padilla, and for doing some motions on the cannabis and supporting small businesses. I'm here as a social equity owner and advocate. My voice represents many who are not able to be here because they've already lost their business, their license, and their dreams due to the DCR and its incompetence. In the city of LA, you must have, you must pay rent for over a year and a half to get a license and open up your doors. There's excessive fees. The city of LA charges more than the state and other municipalities when it comes to its fees. And just this year, 2025, all businesses were paid, were, were forced to pay a $4,000 renewal fee, along with an $8,000 annual application fee. We also are incurring public health permits, certificate of occupancy, and have to pay other state and local fees. There's no legitimate reason why the city is increasing their fees that they're trying to do.
Speaker, you've exhausted your one minute on item 13. You're welcome to move on to another item, or you can continue during general if you'd like.
You know, I just wanted to say, we've been here since April, May, June, every month, talking to you guys about this fee increase.
Okay, so general public comment, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Great, yeah. The city, I mean, the DCR did not do any third-party fee study. It chose to increase its fee to make up for the revenue shortfallings, and it put it on business owners through fee charges. We want to make sure that you guys stop that. There's no reason that you guys should be moving forward with that. We want you to reject the proposed increase until a third party can conduct an independent, you know, can do it independently with public input. We want to provide real enforcement against the legal businesses and provide the direct financial grant that the city stole from social equity applicants this year, and give that directly to licensees and those that needed to run their business. We also ask that you please create a tiered tax, tax structure similar to the other cities like Long Beach, so that we can grow our businesses. And just thank you for your time. You know, we really need the help, and we just ask that you please reject the fee study. Thank you.
General public comment.
Good morning. You have one minute. Go ahead.
Eddie Alvarez, LAOC Building Trades, and a resident of District 14. I just wanted to comment quickly on the convention center. I want to thank all the people that have been working very, very hard to get this thing across the finish line. We're almost there. There's people here in Los Angeles, in Sacramento, and now Washington DC to do our best to get this thing finished. This is a boon for the district that I live in and our membership, to be quite honest with you. Beyond the construction jobs, well, obviously, we're going to build this union with a 50% local hire. Our, our members need this to spur on other construction in the community. We, we, thank you for 1605 this morning, but that's not going to be enough. To really get our homelessness problem to a place where we feel somewhat comfortable, we have to build, and we have to build in Phil, and downtown's a place we can do it. So, again, I want to thank all the people who are working on the construction center, on the convention center project from WebCor, all the way up to our folks in DC who are helping us there, to get this thing across the finish line. Thank you. We hope it gets across the finish line here soon. Thanks.
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Sunshine, Bree, and Gary H.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Item number two.
Okay, so you have one minute for item two. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Mandy Rafferty, regarding the vacation process at the two lots on Pacific View. Throughout this process, the main thing that we've done is try to realize that there is nothing that's going to be changed as far as the, any, any utilities or any public works. That's why this process for 16 months has gone through all the different jurisdictions. And I think the misconception is that the neighbors, which I've tried to talk to, and I've been able to talk to one of them, don't realize that the, the road itself, the right-of-way is not, is intact the whole 40 feet, and there's nothing that's being moved. That the vacation is past that point and has nothing to do with it. And as far as comments, like, we don't want to go through the hillside ordinance, of course, every project, we're an architectural firm, we've done many projects throughout the city. Not only do you have to go through the process of the hillside ordinance, you have to go through the rigorous mall hall and corridor process as well. So these are things, and these things have been approved for very modest 1,600, 1,700 and 1,900 square foot houses based on the slope analysis on the new lots. So the understanding, the misconception is that, you know, we're not getting the, the point across. That's unfortunately the case.
Speaker, your time has expired. Did you want general as well? Okay. You have one minute for general public comment as well. Go ahead.
I mean, the general comment, again, has been in regards to that, the process that we've gone through for the past 16 months, 18 months actually now, and the $20,000 that we've spent doing this thing. The first comments were regarding the utilities. Do you, do you really think that somebody will come and get these lots and move the public utilities? No, those things were taken care of. BOE approved this thing many, many months ago. We went through the first process and got that approval. And, again, I've tried to talk to the neighbors. I've tried to, through the person that, you know, I purchased the lots from, which is one of the neighbors. And, you know, that wasn't allowed to happen. But the fact is that nothing is being changed on the, on the right-of-way. There is no utilities there. That is a, that's, that is an absolute fact. So I would like the council to realize and look at the actual facts rather than things that are just coming up. I appreciate it. Thank you.
General 13 and 18.
Okay, good morning. So you have one minute for 13 and one minute for general. Item number 18 is not open for public comment, but you can speak to it during general public comment if you'd like. So we'll start you with the one minute for the item 13, and then we'll give you an additional minute for general. Go ahead.
Hey, what's up, City Council? My name is Sunshine. Good to see you all. Thank you so much for doing all the hard work you do. Being a cannabis business owner here in Los Angeles, just got licensed this year, getting hit with about $30,000 in fees for the city, and then more state fees, makes it really, really impossible to, well, I'm not going to say impossible. Could you imagine, difficult to convince people to invest into the industry, especially when there are so many illegal cannabis businesses operating in our city? It makes competition really hard. And it seems as though that is not a concern or a priority, which is making it really hard for Angelenos. Now, I got this email saying, hey, your fees were deferred, but you owe them, I don't know what date yet, because it's unclear. But it's going to be huge. And am I supposed to close my business down if I can't find an investor and move out of Los Angeles? Do we want the type of city where?
General public comment. Go ahead.
Great. Do we want the type of city where people who've lived here for 20 some odd year, 30 years, I've lived here for almost 30 years. I love the city. This is my favorite city. I love Los Angeles. I believe world peace starts here. I believe we can do it together. And let's get some peace in the cannabis industry, between the DCR and the people who are being regulated by them. It's very important that you, right now, make the decision that's going to bring us closer together, rather than create more division. And if you vote for this fee increase, it's going to drive us completely into the ground. And we need your compassion, understanding, and drive, because we want to lead. We want to lead, and we need the resources to lead. We need to produce, because leadership requires production. We need your help. We need you to produce for, for us today, to decide, to make it easier for the legal cannabis guy to survive in this industry, so we can thrive and bring more people back into Los Angeles, instead of driving them out of here. I lost so many clients to people just moving out of LA. World peace is possible. Thank you very much, Crisis King.
Next speaker.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
13, please. My name's Bree Warden. I have a store in Chatsworth. I'm speaking today on the detrimental effect that the fees and fines are having on the cannabis industry. Even if you run a tight ship, you have a great operation, they're shutting their doors. People are not making it. These increases, people cannot pay our, cannot pay already. You guys are fueling the illegal market, which is shutting our doors. I hope that you can take these things into consideration and, you know, support us, because right now we're being set up for failure. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Candido, Dana, and Harriet Elliott.
Hold on, before the next speaker goes, Councilmember Roman.
Sorry, could I ask all speakers to just pull the microphone closer to them? We, we can't hear, I can't hear any of the public comment today.
Yeah, if folks could get closer to the mic, and we could get our sound a little sharper, because it's very.
Very hard to hear today.
Echoey and Lo. Thank you, Councilmember Roman.
Good morning. Which, which items would you like to speak to?
I'd like to speak on number two and general comment.
Okay, so if you could repeat, first of all, lift up the mic just a little, because it's, as the councilmembers have just said, it's, it's really difficult to hear today because of the echo. So you said item two?
Two minutes, yes.
Two, and then general public comment?
So general and item number two.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Please begin with the item. Go ahead.
Okay. So on item number two, my name's Gary Hunt. I work with Mandy Rafferty.
Apologies. Can you pause this time? It's, normally, they're not like this. Just get as close to the mic as you can, and we'll start from there.
How about?
Yes, that is better.
Okay, about that. Okay. Yes, my name's Gary Hunt. I work for Mandy Rafferty. I put in the application for the vacation. The reason we are asking for the vacation is because of the hillside ordinance has specific height requirements and a lot of limitations. So with the vacation, we would be able to build something that's in the same scale and character as the rest of the neighborhood. And it wouldn't be something that was odd and tall and skinny-looking. It would be similar to all the other residences. In addition, the vacation does not, we went through like a year of analyzing everything with the Bureau of Engineering. There seems to be no utilities within the area we're asking for the vacation. And even if there were, we would not be moving any utilities. We're also giving the street a 40-foot easement, which is more than required. And we are also, shall I continue?
General public, yep, general public comment. You have a minute.
And we're also planning on widening the street by two feet. So we'll have a 36-foot street, or a 40-foot street easement and a 28-foot pavement width when we're finished. And no utilities will be affected. Nobody will be put out of their utilities. The street will be slightly wider. It shouldn't affect anybody at all. It should actually contribute to the character of the neighborhood. So. So that's all I have to say.
Yes, Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
I was going to speak on agenda item 19, which is the lights. Do you know, the last time I looked less than 30 days ago, there's a 20-foot sign at Alvarado and 6th that is telling the mayor, "Turn the light, if you resign, we'll turn the lights back on." Well, obviously, someone is holding the lights as ransom or anyway, some kind of mafia thing. And no one has explained what is going on. Yeah, I wish somebody else would explain. I'm moving on to public comment. This woman wrote a book. It's about CIA pedophilia. It's her fifth book and it's called Deceive Beyond Belief. I have the book at home. It's shocking. Three-year-olds are brought to orgasm by a male. Okay, that was not her father. By the way, Renee Pittman, I kept, she kept saying she's a lifelong target. And I'm asking a person similar to myself, "How could she be a target? She's not political. She was in the Army. She's an Army brat." Well, she was masturbated to orgasm at a three-year-old. She says there's plenty of others that have had the same experience. I hope you read the book, by the way. I also want to bring up that Carol Rutz wrote a book called, I forget the name of it right now, but you won't find it in the library. They've put it out of print. It's about the same subject.
I have a general comment.
You said general?
Yes.
Okay, you have one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Due to the refusal of accountability, transparency, and cruel and unusual punishment, all of the juvenile detention centers and men's central jail need to be shut down immediately.
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Jared, Mike, and W.
So Mr. Herman, if you are going to speak, please come to the podium now. If not, we'll take the next speaker and then you can come up afterwards. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general.
Yeah, I heard. Uh-huh, I heard. So regarding the necessity for more alcohol at Bristol Farms, how much alcohol can we consume in America? Even Donald Trump knows your cunt mayor is out of her mind, right? But let's talk about the onsite, off-site consumption located at 6221.
Mr. Clark, please stop the speaker's time. Speakers, you have used a word in violation of Council Rule 7. This is your only warning that this word or any of its variations as described in Rule 7 may not be used again in this council meeting and in future council meetings or future council committee meetings. If you violate Rule 7 again, you will forfeit your speaking time and you will be subject to removal from this council, subjects to Rule 7 and 12.
And to be clear, Mr. Herman, that is for your use of the C-word. You were previously warned for your use of the N-word last week.
Do you have any type of paperwork that you're notation about this? Because I need the note. Where are you telling me that I am abusing the First Amendment by saying a word?
Pause this time. All right. The rule has been posted online and so you can check it there. If you'd like to speak about the rule itself, you can do so during general public comment, but for now, stick to the items. Go ahead.
So fuck alcohol, convenience, and public necessity, Mr. Dogson. Yeah, look at him sweat his face up there, everybody. On item number two, drive in the excess of 40 feet public right-of-way. Fuck the public right-of-way at number two. Fuck item three in CD 2.2. And look at Buckethead over there. A bucket head. Ordinance on maintenance. You're going to put streetlights on Figueroa? How am I supposed to get a piece of ass if there's too much light for me to hook up with the pimp and his whip? Come on, Kosker. All of a sudden, you want streetlights? Are you fucking with me? Look at item five in CD 11, Mr. Attorney like yourself. Fuck street lighting. Item number six, fuck CD 14. Gerardo, when are you going to fix the fucking homeless crisis in CD 14? Without those streetlights, you continue to allow these fucking fools to put up their tents, put up their sleeping gear all over Boyle Heights. If I'm wrong, tell me now. Tell me now. You ain't doing shit. Put more streetlights and get the fucking Evergreen path working too. Got your attention, girl? That's the way you should listen. Yeah, where's Burger Girl? Burger! Ah, you're not in CD 12, but fuck it. More street lighting. That's all we need, everybody. Streetlights. More streetlights, but we need them on Figueroa because Smokin' Scan wants to do a research whether or not it's true. Is there prostitution going on on broad daylight? Because you don't need a bi-lights. You don't need lights. The women are out there in the broad daylights flashing their streetlights, pimping their streetlights, showing their knockers on streetlights, right? You're all ski off. She don't count because she ju-ju. I understand now. But for the record, I brought these 15 pages and one for you, Mr. Dog eater. And I'm going to go into my non-agenda public comment under...
You have one minute for general public comment for the members of the public. We appreciate your continued patience.
Snyder versus Faust, 562 U.S., 443. Let's see if the asshole rules me off topic. The placards read, "God hates the USA. Thank God for 9/11. America is doomed, Smokin' Scan. Don't pray for the USA. Thank God for..."
So you need to, although this is general public comment...
I'm talking about Snyder versus Faust, the way this city is all full of fucking faggots. You simplify fucking faggot. That's all I read. Let me finish.
Speak to something that is within the jurisdiction of the city.
All right, now let me finish, goddamned. Excuse me. Fag troops, simplify fags, God hates fags, Maryland, Tavelan, fags doom nation. Not the blessed, just the cursed. Thank God for priest rape boys.
And your time has expired. If you disrupt this meeting from here on out, you'll be subject to removal and exclusion pursuant to Rule 7 and Rule 12. To everyone who's here, either in person or virtually, we sincerely appreciate your patience. I see members of the audience voicing their displeasure quietly with the thumbs down. Truly appreciate that you did not interrupt public comment. Again, that is the way to do it. Thank you so much. Next speaker. Which items would you like to speak to? And good morning.
Hi, my name is Mike Meckler. I'm speaking in opposition to item two.
Okay, so go ahead. You have one minute for item two.
Yes, I'm a resident of Pacific View Drive, just a few hundred yards from this proposed street vacation. In their application, and here today, the developer says that they found the existing hillside restrictions too onerous. But let's be honest, they don't need this vacation to build. They want it to expand their lot so they can build a larger, more extravagant mansion on this tiny hillside plot. Councilmember Rahman, your political career has been centered on housing affordability. Your website speaks of fostering inclusive, affordable, and opportunity-rich neighborhoods. This project does the opposite of all that. Every dollar of city effort spent on giveaways like this is a dollar not spent on affordable housing. Your supporters would be deeply disappointed to see you backing the handout of public land to speculative luxury real estate developers. I urge you to oppose this vacation.
Next speaker.
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Goat, Barbara Martinez, and Art Sawyer.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Jared Kyla with United Cannabis Business Association here on behalf of general public comment and item 13.
Okay, so you have one minute for item 13 and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Sure. Here we are with item 13, an increase in fees to an already overly-regulated, overly-taxed, overly-burdened industry that's just trying to grow in a city that has given it very little opportunities. With over 4,000 illegal dispensaries and smoke shops and CBD stores that are all selling like or similar or the exact same items as the legal cannabis industry, we're in a difficult position. We have 3,600 competitors who all have prices that are 50% less. We can look at the taxes and we can add them up, but the reality is these taxes accumulate by taxing other taxes. So the cumulative tax rate to the consumer, these are not just business taxes, is 44%. Now, in that 44%, we have a 10% gross receipts tax. We charge that to the customer. And then the city and the Office of Finance then go and charge 10% on the 10% we charge the customer, thus incurring another 1% cost to the business on top of the 10%, thus accumulation to 11% gross receipts tax. I will go to general public comment. So here we are at 11% gross receipts tax, the highest in the state, taxing other taxes. We're not even taxing services anymore. We have 4,000 competitors. Where do you expect the cannabis industry to go from here? That is the problem we're faced with. We have hundreds of businesses going out of business. We have hundreds of millions of dollars in back debt and taxes, and that doesn't include the debt that goes to other people inside the cannabis industry and in the supply chain. We have a critical time right now where we either let the illicit industry take over Los Angeles, which it kind of already is, or we uplift some of the existing tax-paying, regulated cannabis businesses, give them an opportunity to survive. Thriving is outside the scope of most cannabis people now. We just want survival. The city council has an opportunity to vote on lowering the excise tax. I'd really love to see a motion to lower that. I know we have some economic studies, but we already see the studies of what's happening currently. Thank you.
Which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning. Mr. City Attorney, I'd like to speak to item number two and general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute for item number two and one minute for general. Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. President and honorable council members, I'm speaking to item number two. My name is Art Sawyer and I'm a 28-year resident of Pacific View Drive in CD 4. The proposed vacation is a harm to the adjoining home, landowners, and the surrounding neighborhood. It sacrifices a critical street and hillside buffer for the benefit of a single landowner. His current lots allow him to build in compliance with the mall-holic scenic plan, yet his application to receive hundreds of square feet of land via this vacation is, as he himself notes in his application, not to build more homes, not to build affordable homes, but to build a bigger, more expensive home that reduces the present right-of-way. It is not in the city's interest to make this vacation. The city is not avoiding any liabilities through the vacation because the narrow street will still be impinged by the hillside. Should the vacation go through, the city will find itself with less land and less control. Should the vacation go through, the city will find itself with less land and less control. If the vacation is not in the city's interest, not in the neighborhood's interest, why should the vacation be made for a non-resident developer? I respectfully ask that you reject this vacation as proposed or return it to the Public Works Committee for further input. Thank you for your time.
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Charlie Alvarez, Jefferson Azabedo, and John Patker.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Public comment.
So you have one minute. Go ahead.
Okay, so I want to make sure that when my minute starts, I want to make sure everybody's listening and not just ignoring us because sometimes we feel that way. Okay, so I'm going to start. My name is Barbara. I'm here in support of Gaza and Palestine, where a lot of our children over there are getting killed and they're dying of hunger. I came with my brothers and sisters here in support of Gaza, but also what was going on in our community. Our children are also getting, our children and our people are getting suppressed. They're attacking our children. And by how? By them going, the immigration going to our schools and trying to arrest them and deport them. We got to stop this and you as our council members need to help us out and do something in our communities and really protect our students. Our people are here, hardworking people, and we're not here to kill or sell drugs. We're here to make a better living, so it's not fair that they're doing this to us. So we're here in solidarity with Gaza, we hate Palestine, we hate Palestine.
Speaker, next speaker.
Which items would you like to speak to?
In opposition to item number two, my name is Charles Alvarez and I live on Pacific View Drive. I'm strongly opposed to vacating the easement for the two lots in question. Pacific View Drive is a narrow, windy street and the removal of the easement would make the street even narrower and more dangerous. There is also a large utility pole in the middle of the two lots in question that includes power lines, telephone, cable TV, internet lines, and a streetlight. There's very little space or room available for alternate location for that utility pole. Contrary to the assertions in the application, all of the owners of the budding properties on both Pacific View Drive and Los Autores have signed a petition in opposition to vacating the easement. I would like to present that petition to the city council. And by the way, we were also not notified in a timely manner about the previous subcommittee hearings for this matter as required by the Brown Act. Thank you.
Next speaker.
I'd like to make general public comments in 1 through 13, items 1 through 13.
Good morning. You said general public comment and...
Items 1 through 13.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items. Go ahead.
Begin with the items. Okay, so the first public comments I'm going to speak on are in regards to the fee increases from the DCR. Like one of my colleagues says, we've been coming out here since April, trying to engage and speak on, in regards to the industry, is why those fee increases don't make any sense. I wanted to provide some clear examples of some of the current functionality of it. Right now, in order to submit a new DBA for your business that's required by the city and the state, the city doesn't charge you, or excuse me, the state doesn't charge you any fees to do a DBA into your license. Neither does the Department of Finance here at the city nor does the county. But if you go to the DCR, they're going to charge you over $500 just to submit a DBA. Mine's literally a five-letter word that needs to be submitted to my record and they want to charge us $500 for that. Just the general public comments in regards to...
Okay, so you have one minute.
Yep. So another example that I've been experiencing with the DCR and the social equity is the prorata dispersment. It took about 10 months for us to get that prorata dispersment. Those funds could have been utilized for my business to be able to pay for security guards, for debt that I had incurred opening up. And so 10 months of waiting and emails and follow-ups for getting a prorata dispersment really hindered my business from being able to advance and have a strong leg to stand on. Another issue we encountered too, in the same year, we were required to pay a temporary license renewal that was about $4,500. Within a month, I got an invoice for another annual fee for the same cycle year, the same business year, approximately $7,000 and something dollars. Ultimately, our social equity funds pulled that money out, but why would I be required to pay for two licenses for the same year? Doesn't make any sense and I hope you guys will look into the fee increases.
Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
General comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
All right. I heard a lot about LAPD, the city of Los Angeles, and ICE. And it's important also for us to understand that the Zionist state are training the police here in Los Angeles and other cities as well. So in order to support our people here and also the people in Palestine who are under genocide, LA as an international city needs to wake up and be in the forefront. So you need to divest from the Zionist state, also known as Israel, and from companies who do business with them because that cannot continue. We're using our money to fund the people that are brutalizing us here and also killing children in Gaza. We have to stop. We have to stop. Free Palestine.
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Chris Martinez, Daniel Sosa, and Kitty Hollerith.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
We're from the three hunger strike, three-day hunger strike for Palestine against starvation. You know, the world is, look, the world looks at Los Angeles, and you know, what you say, what you do can have a big impact on humanity against the starvation of babies, of children. We know that you have issues that you spend on things, but you spend millions on militias against protesters in Palestine, against the ICE. But you spend Band-Aids on housing. There's a crisis, and that's what's going on. Now, we know that the United States, if there's evil, it thrives on evil. It takes our tax dollars, it takes our money, and sends it for massive weapons of national distresses to Israel. Now, you can do, you can make a resolution to say no, to say no to genocide here and there. Why are you going to do it? Make a resolution.
Speaker, your time has expired.
Before the next speaker, I'd like to call a few more names. Lynn Sosa, Peter, and Richard.
And before the... All right, and after these speakers, that'll conclude public comment for today's meetings. If those speakers can line up. And before we begin with the next speaker, with the person who's holding up the sign, so we do have a rule that restricts the size of the signs, and the reason for that is there are peoples that often sit behind you, it can block their view, and so the rule says that the signs need to be, or the flags need to be eight by 11, regardless of what they say. So I'd ask that you please not raise the sign for the rest of this meeting. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
I'd like to speak on item 13 and general public comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Go ahead.
My name is Daniel Sosa. I own and operate four dispensaries in the city of LA. The prospect of raising fees on cannabis businesses is a ridiculous and tone-deaf proposition. The cannabis industry is in a state of crisis. We cannot afford higher fees. We cannot afford to operate under the current tax and fee structure. We need sweeping changes to the tax rates and regulatory structure here in Los Angeles. The average licensed cannabis dispensary in LA is in over $1 million in debt to the city and over $1 million in tax debt to the state. Meanwhile, we are competing against an illicit market which pays no taxes and controls over 60% of the total cannabis market. Plain and simple, we cannot afford to pay higher fees in such a hostile business environment. Please vote against raising fees for cannabis businesses.
General public comment.
I really appreciate everybody listening to my important public comment. Today is day 26 of 24-hour protests outside the Metropolitan Detention Center against ICE's presence in our city. LAPD is continuing to harass, intimidate, and arrest peaceful protesters and is using 4118 as an excuse to do it. We are continuing to document and record them every time they do this. When you guys passed 4118, many warned it was a slippery slope. Well, the slope has slipped, and LAPD is now using 4118, the ordinance specifically created to address homeless encampments, to harass and intimidate and arrest peaceful protesters. These are serious civil rights violations. They are opening the city up to liability, and it is a terrible precedent that LAPD continues to set. Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Yeah, I'm going to speak, I'm going to have a general comment, and I can address one agenda item.
So you have one minute for the item and one minute for general. Please begin with the item. Go ahead.
One minute each? Okay. And it doesn't matter what I start with?
Oh, so we start your time.
I'm going to start with general comment.
So the rules, we request, just like everybody else, we start with the item, and then we do general public comment.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'm sorry. So the item I would like to speak on, it does pertain to lighting, and I would like to bring attention to CD1. And the area that I'm speaking about is the tributary, the Arroyo River that goes along the 110. I've brought this to your office's attention in the past, and I want to say I really appreciate the work you're doing in the community to clear some of the encampments that are around there. But this one, along our freeway, it's really bad, and it just keeps growing and growing. There must be, I mean, I don't know how many people occupy these encampments, but if there's two or three, there's at least, you know, eight of them. So there's over eight people, I'm sure, at least a dozen or more people, and the plastic is hanging over the freeway and waving around, and they just keep growing. I don't know what the answer is. I don't think anybody here knows the answer.
General public comment.
But we need to clear that, and I would appreciate it. All right, so moving on to general comment, I heard the buzzer. Thank you.
I don't think they were trying to buzz it on you. I think it was just, we were trying to reset the time. Sorry, if you could start it at one. Go ahead.
Okay, this general comment does pertain to the council members. This side of the aisle looks like they're paying attention, but this side of the aisle, to me right now, does not. None of them are looking at me. And I was very impressed with one of the speakers a couple weeks ago that addressed the issue. I am retired now, but I was a teacher for 26 years with LA Unified, and I want to know, wouldn't you agree that students are expected to listen and pay attention to what is being presented? As you know, cell phones were banned in classrooms. You probably all supported that. And why don't we ban the cell phones here during this session? Maybe that is something you could think about. It would make you pay attention, look at the speaker, and show some respect. Do you talk in the church service? Do you pay attention when you go to your child's recital or performance? I would hope that you do. You're not chatting with your friends like you are here. Please show some respect. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, and I believe this is the final speaker as well. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Hello. I'm here to talk about general to comment, please.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Hello, I'm Eddie, one of the primary organizers of the 535 L.A. Street Protest. Are you guys listening? It's 24-hour, seven-days-a-week protest that started June 11th. Do you know why we're protesting?
Hold on, can we pause this time? Sorry, so...
Hello. Yeah, the mic is weird. What's going on?
Yeah, so you're speaking very clearly. Just back up just a little bit, if you could. Just say something.
Hello.
That is better. I think you were a little too close to the mic. So go ahead.
Can we restart it real quick, then?
We paused your time for that, but go ahead. You still have your remaining 42 seconds.
Can we just restart it real quick, please? Thank you. I appreciate if you restarted it, please.
Again, we can't give you additional time. Go ahead.
So you're restarting it. It's 38 seconds. Please restart it.
Now you're being repetitive.
No, it hasn't started, restarted it, please.
Time, we paused it when we were explaining the instructions.
I want you guys to hear me. I really want you guys to hear me. Please, let me restart it.
This is your last opportunity, or I'm going to have to ask you to vacate the Potomino Four for your time. So you have 27 seconds. We paused it when we were giving you the instructions. Go ahead.
He's taking the Olympics away from you. Today, Trump is taking the Olympics away from you. You guys are merely City Council, but you're City Council of one of the largest economies of the country. Join us in fighting for the rest of the country. If you can't join us because of your own cowardice, please don't be our enemy. Please listen to the people. I wish I had my whole minute to talk to you guys, but you keep silencing me. Don't silence us, please. I really would wish to have a whole minute.
Speaker, your time has expired. All right, thank you so much, Speaker. Mr. Clerk, what items are available for us to consider?
Mr. President, the council may now vote on items 1, 3 through 13, and 19 through 29.
All right, those items are now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
All right, what's next?
The council may now consider item 2, held for Councilmember Rahman for remarks.
Councilmember Rahman.
Council President, may I request a one-week continuance of this item for us to be able to address some of the questions that were brought up today?
All right.
And for the record, that would be Tuesday, August 12, 2025.
All right, that item will be continued to Tuesday, August 12 without objection. What's next?
Thank you very much.
Council has motions for posting a referral.
They are posted and they are referred?
The desk is clear, sir.
All right, announcements, members, announcements. Councilmember Rahman. You have an announcement?
Yes.
Okay.
Great, I just wanted to flag for everybody, as part of this year's budget process, we created a Bureau of Homelessness Oversight in the Housing Department, establishing for the first time a place in the city that is charged with performance oversight.
Okay, I'm sorry, Councilmember. So I'm going to warn the gentleman who's holding up the sign in the red T-shirt, please do not disrupt this meeting. So public comment period is over. You were also already given the opportunity to speak. This is your first and only warning. The same goes for the woman in the yellow shirt who is raising her fist. This is your first and only warning. Do not disrupt this meeting. If you continue to do so, you'll be subject to removal and exclusion pursuant to Rule 7 and Rule 12. So, Mr. President, the gentleman in the red shirt who's holding the sign is eligible for removal. He has been warned and is still disrupting this meeting. Sir, you've been warned from disrupting the meeting. I'm going to ask you to leave the meeting now. You've been excused from this meeting pursuant to Rule 7 and Rule 12. And, Mr. President, the woman in the yellow-tinted shirt with the raised fist and the glasses has also been warned, twice actually, and is eligible for removal if you would like. Members of the public, we took public comment for over an hour. There will also be an opportunity for public comment tomorrow and on Friday. So please do not disrupt the meeting. We're trying to hear announcements from Councilmember Rahman. I'm sorry, Councilmember... And for the record, everybody, before we go back to Councilmember Rahman, just to note, we had about 68 minutes of public comment today. We took as many speakers as we possibly could. So just so folks knows, Councilmember Rahman.
Thank you so much. I'll start again. As part of this year's budget process, we created a Bureau of Homelessness Oversight in the Housing Department, which is establishing for the first time a place in the city that is charged with overseeing performance to ensure that every dollar that we're spending on homelessness is working to get people the care that they need and that they're moving indoors. And as a first step, staff from the Housing Department and consultants in partnership with the CAO and CLA have been working with LASSA to identify and improve data collection about the four key areas of city investment in our homelessness response. That's outreach, interim shelter, permanent supportive housing, and time-limited subsidies. That will help us answer questions like how many total beds we're investing in and are we filling those beds every night? How long are people staying in those beds? What kind of care are we getting in those shelters? This is the kind of data that we can use to identify problems in program implementation and solve those problems to help as many people as possible to come indoors into safety. We can also use this information to advocate for better resources from the county. A presentation on the data and how it could be used to improve our system's performance will be made in the H&amp;H Committee meeting tomorrow afternoon. Staff will also showcase one example of how this data has already been used to yield results by filling empty PSH units across the city. And since this is a topic of widespread interest, I want to make sure and make an announcement here to encourage you or appropriate staff to listen in, and I welcome your feedback as this process moves forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Rahman. Councilmember McCosker.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Rahman, for that. Members, I know that many of us have National Night Out events in our districts. I just want to highlight that this is National Night Out Day. I want to highlight a couple in the 1-5 for the listening audience. Across Los Angeles, it's an annual community-building event that serves to promote public safety, community partnerships, and neighborhood camaraderie. In the 1-5, we're really proud that we're going to be hosting, for the first time ever, two at the stations. So the Harbor Division is going to have one, and the Southeast Division is going to have a National Night Out, as they usually do. We also have a National Night Out event from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. that'll be at the Harbor City Recreational Center, so it covers the entire range of the district. At each of the events, there's going to be free entertainment, food, games, resources for the public. Come on out, and I want to say that every single resident, every resident in the city of Los Angeles is invited out. It is a place where you're going to be safe. It's a place where you're going to be safe, and you're going to have an opportunity to participate as a resident, regardless of your status, to make sure that we're all working together on our own public safety. So thank you.
Thank you so much, and we'll see you at Southeast Division tonight. Councilmember McCosker, Councilmember Padilla.
I just wanted to let everybody know that what I brought up last week related to LAUSD and UTLA seeking partnerships for going back to school on August 13th has been forwarded over to your offices from my office. So for those who are saying what we're doing or what we could potentially do to help the children of Los Angeles, I brought it up last week. It's now in your inboxes and looking forward to, you know, hopefully we can all be partners in one way or another with our schools.
Thank you so much. And the first day of school again is August?
It's next Thursday.
Okay, okay, so next Thursday, school starts.
And what they want is for people to be there at the receiving end when they arrive, so that's children feel like their neighborhood has their back.
Right on, right on. And Thursday's not a council day, so hopefully some or all of us can make it out to a school that morning. Any other announcements, members? All right, seeing none, I'll ask everyone in the chamber to rise for adjourning motions and ask if there are adjourning motions to my left. Councilmember McCosker.
Thank you very much, Council President and colleagues. I ask that we adjourn today in memory of Violet Moretti, a proud San Pedro native, devoted mother and grandmother, and beloved member of the Harbor Area community. Violet passed away at the age of 91, leaving behind a legacy of family, faith, and service that will long be remembered by everyone who knew and loved her. Violet was born on August 9, 1932, in San Pedro to Joseph and Lubica Ursic, immigrants from the island of Brac, Croatia. She grew up in a close-knit neighborhood, which was very common in the Harbor Area in those days, where family ties ran strong and everyone was within walking distance of uncles, aunts, and cousins. Though she never learned to ride a bicycle, says her daughter, Violet's childhood was full of freedom and fun. She roamed the bluffs near Crescent Street, played near the Quicksand, where warehouses nine and 10 are now constructed, but later, she also rode in the Fisherman's Fiesta parades, which were quite a thing for folks in her generation, where she said she felt like royalty, where they would wave to people on the docks from the boats that were all decorated before they were blessed and sent out to sea. Violet attended Dana Junior High and graduated from San Pedro High School in the winter of 1951. After studying at Harbor College, she worked over a decade at Douglas Aircraft, where she was introduced to customs for the first time out of college, for the first time introduced to customs outside of her Croatian upbringing. That's how the Harbor Area was in those days. She spoke about how amazed she was to learn that Americans put sour cream on their baked potatoes and other things that were, she was unaccustomed to, being in her San Pedro Croatian cocoon, which I say lovingly. She was a lifelong member of the Dalmatian American Club. Violet learned to dance with the Kolo folk group in traditional Croatian culture. She married Louis Moretti, a fellow Croatian, a longshoreman, and together they raised two daughters, Marilyn and Kathy. The family remained very deeply connected to Mary Star of the Sea Parish, where Violet volunteered in the Christian care ministry. Her truest vocation, though, was nurturing her family with love, tradition, and food, whether it was her sarmah, her stuffed bell peppers, her leg of lamb, or homemade palenchika. Her kitchen was always the heart of the home. Her greatest joy came from being a grandma to her three grandchildren, Bianca, Gabriela, and Brandon. In retirement, Violet and Louis spent peaceful years in Wildemar. Their days were spent swimming in the pool, picking tomatoes on the farm, and enjoying the fruits of a well-lived life. Her... Her story reflects the enduring spirit of the communities in the Harbor Area, hardworking, family-centered, faithful, and rich in culture. And today, we honor her memory and extend our deepest condolences to her family, who were all so fortunate to share her life. I knew her from the campaign trail, got to know her, and she was a lovely woman. I knew her family, but I met her and spent a few years with her, so thank you and God bless her.
Thank you so much, Mr. McCosker. Beautifully said. Any other adjourning motions on my left? Adjourning motions to my right? All right, we're adjourned. Thank you so much, everybody.